I call to order the January 27, 2020 regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice.
And first item, approval of minutes of January 13, 2020, regular meeting. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the minutes of the January 13, 2020 meeting as submitted.
Second?
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Great, thank you. Roughly at the hour of seven o'clock, we have Bill Frer, our town auditor, presentation of fiscal year 2019 audit report.
Thank you, good to be back. I see I drew a crowd tonight. It's an exciting presentation. We'll start with just a basic overview like we always do with the audit. I like to make sure that the board knows that we didn't have to make any adjustments to the general ledger other than the things that we have to do to convert the numbers from the way the state requires you to keep them to the way we have to present them in the financial statements. Also, there were no material weaknesses identified during the audit in your internal controls. There were no significant deficiencies, no reportable conditions on compliance with laws and regulations, and the audit report was unqualified. And I just want to say, I don't think I actually say this most years, but you probably hear it and you think, alright, you know, that's sort of the standard thing. I do have audit clients that have one or several of these identified. So it's not as if when we do audits, we don't find things that have to get adjusted because there's been some errors, or there's a material weakness, or a significant deficiency, or some sort of issue with a compliance on a required law or regulation. So it is a testament to how the town has done for many years now that none of these things have been identified. The last bullet on this first sheet is we did the conversion to GASB-75 for OPEB for the retiree health insurance benefits required by the GASB, the Government Accounting Standards Board. We did that last year in 18, and 19 was year two. And I only say that because we'll talk about it in a little while because there is some tweaking to the numbers that your actuary had to do with assumptions and that sort of thing, which we'll talk about a little bit, not too much. Next slide, the first slide of numbers. So the other thing I want to say is your financial statements, I think, is pushing, are pushing 60 pages now, 50 something. These have grown since I started doing this 100 years ago from about 20 pages, under 20 pages. GASB has layers and layers of more requirements now, so it's become very complicated. And I think it's unfortunate in a way, even though there's a lot more information in these statements, they're sort of harder to understand for someone who isn't an accountant, who doesn't do this all the time. So what I try to do with these slides is just pick out a few numbers, a few sort of important numbers, I guess, out of the 60 pages, and kind of give you an overview. So the first one, since the general fund is the big fund of the town and it makes up a big chunk of what the number's total in here, we look at the revenues, the revenue side and the expenditure side, and look at the growth. Now, there are going to be reasons why in any given year the growth might be up or down, but we like to, I shouldn't say we, the, you know, the bond people, the banks, like to see you in that kind of 3% to 5% range, because they like to know that the town is growing and the town is able to fund what they need. But if it's too high, if the increases are too high, they know it's not sustainable. So you're in a good place in that your five-year averages are in that 4% to 5% range. And there's a few comments at the bottom that try to explain some of the numbers that are a little higher than most of the others. For example, in 2019, you had a little bit of a higher jump in revenue, and it was mostly because of the building permits and investment income, and that's a one-time kind of thing. It's not something that's going to be sustainable year after year. Second slide is we look at that budget-to-actual number. We've talked about this every year, and we like to be in that 1% to 2% range on both the revenue side and the expense side. And as you can see, over the five years, you've really been pretty much on target. Again, if your revenues or expenses end up being lower, like, you know, if your variations are down around the 0.5%, 1%, you worry that if you have a bad year, you're going to go into the negative. So having this 1.9% and 2% variance is, you know, is good. It's where you want to be. And then we look at the use of free cash, which has been, the free cash that goes towards the budget, has pretty much stayed level because the town has implemented a very good plan to keep the amount of $500,000 going towards the budget and $175,000 towards the reserve fund. And then the balance is the free cash that's used for capital and other things, and that's really a factor of how much free cash you have from the year before. So that can go up or down based on the available free cash. Hopefully that all makes sense. Okay, the status of town reserves. So the S&amp;P, the bond rating agencies, really look at this, because they like towns to be, they use this 8% to 12%, 5% to 15%, there's a lot of percentages that get thrown around. So we take the general fund free cash and the stabilization, which are really your two sort of reserves that you can use for almost anything. And you can see that you start the year at a certain number, then in the spring, you go to town meeting and use some of that, so you end up lower. But you've stayed within that, you know, as I said, 8% to 12%, 5% to 15%, there's a lot of numbers that get batted around. But your reserves are solid. I have towns that have these percentages down in the 3% and 4%, 5% level, and that starts getting concerning. You don't want your reserves to be so low that if something unexpected comes up, you might have trouble funding it. So again, you know, slide after slide, I think you're seeing what particularly the bond people would look at as pretty solid numbers. The next page, so these are your big liabilities, the OPEB liability and the net pension liability. And we've talked about these at length because they do kind of go all over the place. And so for the OPEB thing, I would say, if you can, try to ignore the noise of the liability side, because GASB keeps changing the requirements, the actuaries come in and say, well, we can't use this discount rate anymore, we have to use a higher or a lower discount rate. So on the OPEB thing, I say focus on the trust fund. That is the thing that's in your control. And as you can see, you've gone from 2015 to 2019, growing from $500,000 to $3 million. Now, $3 million, you're up to almost, not quite, obviously, but 10% of the net OPEB liability, and I think you're ahead of the curve if you look statewide at what towns are doing. So again, it's that consistent contributions to the fund that's part of your budget plan. I think that's a very good thing, because some towns get reactive and say, well, we have money this year, we don't have money this year. You've done a good job at just saying, you know, we're building a foundation in our budget for OPEB. It may take a long time, but we want to start funding this. And now you're really starting to see some of the growth. I believe from '17 to '18, that was $500 a year, Jason?
Yes.
So you can see that you're also now, that increase from '16 to '17, '17, '18, '18 to '19 is more than $500. So you've had three good years of not only the $500,000, but good investment returns. So it's not just increasing by the $500, it's increasing by the $500 plus the investment return. So, you know, this is going to be, over time, a really good story to tell. And you've made it, you know, you started to make quite a dent in it already to be up almost to 10% of the net OPEB liability. We talked about the pension liability as late as today, because as you know, the Worcester regional system has put all the towns on a, well, the state, I guess, required it, but put the towns on a plan to be fully funded by sometime in the 2030s. Yours is 2035. And it's a little disconcerting that it seems like the pension, the net pension liability keeps growing. And again, all I can say to you is, I'm sure they have a lot of people that have, you know, given them advice, their actuary, other people on their plan. Over the long term, their projections are that you are going to be fully funded by 2035. This short-term stuff does have something to do with the, some of the assumptions they have to use. They tweaked the mortality rates. Unfortunately, people are living longer. Fortunately for the people, unfortunately for the liability. So the longer people are going to be drawing on that pension liability, the more the liability's going to increase. And I think they've tweaked down a little bit their long-term projected rate of what the investments can make, what they hold in assets. So that has caused some of that growth. Jason, John, and I were looking just a little bit earlier at these detailed schedules they have projecting through 2035, and, you know, they believe they're on target. So that's sort of in, out of your hands. All you can do is pay your assessment and, you know, hope that their plan works. And you're not in any other, you know, in a different situation than any other town in the state. As a matter of fact, I'm not really sure where the Worcester regional system is, but I think you're kind of in the middle of the pack as to how much that's funded. There are some other systems in the state that look a little grim. Is there anything on that, on OPEB or pension? I'd just like to show the debt because, you know, it's a big number, and the concern would be if debt was constantly growing. I believe in 2016, I'm sorry, I'm off my notes a little bit here, 2015 and '16, you did the school borrowing, so there were increases in both of those years, which you, you know, obviously planned for. And then you've been drawing down. And as we've talked about for the last several years, the plan that was put in place to target the excess free cash to capital, to not borrow as you once did years ago for all the little, you know, for a lot of little things, and basically only borrow for the very, very, very large stuff like buildings, has been another positive for the town. And so you see that this, you know, the debt until the next big thing comes along, the debt will continue to go down. And that overall number, as I think I've said in years past, the $24 million on a budget your size is pretty low. Last, again, just because they're big numbers, these are your fixed assets, your capital assets, whatever you want to call them, which is everything from buildings to roads to water and sewer infrastructure, to equipment, to land. And again, the reason I like to show this is because the concern would be if you start seeing, over years, I never like to react to just one year, but over the years, if you start seeing these numbers going down, the bond people are going to look at that and say, they can't afford to reinvest, they can't afford to replace their equipment. So to see these numbers, even, obviously '16 in particular, because you had a lot of the school expenditures in that year, but even not in those years, you see in the gross, in the gross numbers, you see an increase. And even though there's been, there hasn't been anything, you know, major, and there's been less capital the last couple of years, because free cash has been a little lower, you've been able to have a five-year average of, you know, 6% and 7% on your growth in assets. And that shows that the town is reinvesting, reinvesting in what it needs to. And I think that is it.
Thank you very much, Bill. Really appreciate it. John, do you have anything you want to add?
You're going to lead with me?
I'll lead with you.
Excellent. Well, first of all, I want to acknowledge our finance director, Jason Little, who's here, sitting in the front row, Amy Haley, our treasure collector. But in particular, in terms of the audit and the clean audit that you have come to know and love for the better part of a decade and a half, is largely attributable to the work that Jason does as our finance director and town accountant. In terms of the information you heard from the auditor, none of this stuff should surprise you, right? It shouldn't, because this is the exact same information that you receive every December as part of the financial trend monitoring. And the things that the auditor is worried about or concerned about and focused on are the same things that the credit rating bureaus are focused on, and the same things that you as a policy board and committee should be and are adequately focused on. But the things that drive our success are that we have financial discipline, formally adopted policies, and that we adhere to them. And to Bill Frer's comment about, you know, when things get difficult, the easiest thing to do is not put that money towards the capital equipment, not put it towards the liabilities, to take on more debt. We've been disciplined for over a decade to, with these financial policies, to manage ourselves well. And you'll hear me say this many times, you know, when you look at any organization, you know, if the foundation is strong, then the structure on top is sound, and then you can worry about things like, you know, doing beautification projects and the things that you have the luxury to worry about. In Northborough, our foundation is strong because we have been so consistent, in part because people like you on the boards and committees have the historical perspective and the discipline not to blow in the wind when things get a little bit difficult, that we have our principles and our policies and we adhere to them. And that bears out, you know, you have very low debt, it's around 4% or 5%. That's amazing for a town our size. You've got solid reserves, as you heard, our goal is to stay between 8% and 10% of operating revenues. We're there. Our unfunded liabilities are being addressed. I can go down the list of all the things that you, again, it's the same information that we provided to you back in December as part of the financial trend monitoring. And it's the same information that's available to anybody in the public that wants to take the time to look at Appendix B of our budget document. We track these things because they're important, and we report on them because they're important, and the auditor looks at them because they're absolutely critical to our success. And so I just can't say enough about the staff, but also the department heads and their willingness to work within these policy framework and to frankly, to return money when they can find more cost-effective ways during the course of the year to provide a service. We don't have the mentality as some organizations, which is, you know, at the end of the year, if there's money left over, we want to spend it because we're concerned that when we come back around to talk to the Board of Selectmen and the Appropriations Committee, they're going to say, well, you turned back $10,000, so we need to cut your budget. You know, oftentimes, we find grants or more cost-effective ways to provide these services, and our department heads are comfortable that they're going to be rewarded for that good management and not penalized. And again, this is all about doing this consistently year after year. And I can't say enough about the management team and the organization and the boards and committees that really, from a policy standpoint, make this possible. And that starts and stops with the Board of Selectmen. Your support and understanding of this information and your willingness to stand up for the financial foundation and structure of our community on a consistent basis at town meeting is one of the primary reasons why we're in good shape. I can't do my job, the department heads can't do their job if you don't do your job, and you guys are excellent at your job. And it bears out on the other side. And again, it's about on the front end doing well, planning well, and the audit is about looking at, did you execute your game plan well? Did you finish at the end when you look back? Were your assumptions good? Did your planning pan out? And I'll tell you, to be within 1% to 2% on revenues and expenditures at the end of the year, if you're any closer than that, it's dumb luck. And to be any closer than that, we'd be biting our nails. We are right in that window where we want to be. And again, I'm pleased you got another beautiful, clean audit from the town, and I'm just pleased that the plan has come to fruition here. And again, I credit the department heads and our finance director, particularly on the audit, for the great work that he's done. So that's, those are my comments.
Very good. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Comments from the board? Leslie?
Bill, thank you very much for being here again. You always do a great job, and I appreciate the fact that you deliver the details in a presentation like this. And I think it's important for residents who are watching or who watch the replays that they can see this information. And to John and the financial team for all the transparency. I have complete confidence in what's going on here, and I don't wonder what's really going on behind the scenes, and gee, are we covering up something? I think everything is done very well. I feel like we have such positive news every year, I don't know what different things I can even ask, because we're doing a great job. And I know that I have complete confidence in you that if there was something up, that you would say so. So we really appreciate your work and for being here. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Leslie. Any other? Julian?
Yes, thank you to the financial team and Mr. Frer. I just have one question on page two, that slide, status of town reserves.
Sure.
So percent of budget of your reserves, is there like a number that would trigger you to say your reserves are getting too low? Would it be like 10% or?
I don't, I don't know. I mean, really, my primary job here is to certify your numbers, certify your financial statements, and not to give, yeah, I'm not doing a management audit where I would come in and look more at the non, you know, straight numbers, decisions that are made. I can just tell you when, I have a town that is much lower than this. I can't say there's a specific number. It becomes a focus of the conversations when we have the calls with standard imposers or moody's, because they're concerned about that. Why can't you build up your reserves? You know, why is there very little money in stabilization? So I don't think that there's, you know, there's a magic number. As I've, as I said when I was chatting, and you all go to a lot more conferences, you may hear things, but you hear that 8% to 12%. Sometimes they stretch it a little bit and will say 5% to 15%. You know, I think when you try to be a town like this town has been for so long, which I think is, you know, pretty progressive and trying to be fiscally responsible, I don't think you want to be on the low end of that. So when you, after you go to town meeting in the spring and you end up with the eight and a half, that last column there, you know, that you've stayed in the, oh, thanks, that last column there, when you're, you know, between that 8.4% and 9% free cash after the town meeting, that's not, you know, overly high. I don't, you know, but I think beyond what I just said, which I know is kind of a non-answer in a way, it really is more of a philosophical and political decision, not, you know, something. I can just tell you what I hear out there. And that's what I hear. We, you know, the bond people, which can control costs for you, because if you borrow and it's higher, those are the numbers that get batted around. I mostly hear 8% to 12%, but I have heard the 5% to 15% range.
Okay, thank you.
John, do you want?
Yeah, so if I could just follow up on that through the chair. So our, we have a policy that's agreed on by all the financial boards and committees and the Board of Selectmen, formally adopted, and our policy is 5% to 10%. And that's for a very good reason. So when it comes to your bond rating, when we're going out to the market to take on debt to do large building projects like Lincoln Street or upcoming a fire station, you get rated, just like in your personal life, you have a credit rating, a credit worthiness, right? The higher your rating, the lower you're going to pay for interest when you finance a house or a vehicle. And so it's the same thing with municipalities, is that your credit rating is absolutely critical to what you will pay in interest. And when you're talking about borrowing $25 million or $20 million, it has hundreds of thousands of dollars difference if you have a good credit rating versus a not-so-good credit rating. So in Northborough, when we get evaluated, when we're going to go out and issue debt, they go through, they look at everything. They look at all of these indicators, and they look at our level of reserves. A town our size with our socioeconomic demographics, they really want to see us closer to that 10% mark. So our policy is 5% to 10%. So we try to stay, you know, between 8% and 10% within the range of that. And, you know, next time we go out to bond, we'll get asked a lot of questions about our level of reserves. And the whole point of this is, it's just like you, when you go to borrow money, if you're going to buy a house, they're going to evaluate your credit worthiness. One of the things they're looking at is if something happens, if you lose your job or there's an emergency, are you going to be able to make your mortgage payments? Well, they want to see us, you know, between typically between 8% to 10%, because they want to know that we're going to be able to make our bond payments if, I don't know, we hit a recession, if our state aid gets cut, if there's an economic disruption to the local economy, if there's an actual disaster. Those are all things that come into play. And so we are spot on, exactly where we need to be for a town with our demographics. And just so you know, we get rated on, you know, there are some towns that have very high bond ratings that maybe aren't as well-managed because the town just is a wealthy community. I always say, my bond rating will go up if you all would make more money. If you all lived in million-dollar homes and made more money, our bond rating would naturally be elevated. But for us, we're a AA1 community, that's the highest we're going to ever be based on getting full credit. We get maximum credit for our management. So you get different points in different areas. But based on the wealth of our community, we're AA1 community, that's where we're going to be. And just so you, to remind you, when we went out for this town's single largest bond issuance for the Lincoln Street project, we got our bond rating upgraded. And in part, they cited our payment towards our unfunded liabilities, our low level of debt, and our financial reserves. So it's all important. But the policy, 5% to 10%, and where we are is spot on.
And for that bond issuance, that was at the lowest interest rate, I believe?
That was the lowest interest rate in the town's history for the single largest issuance for Lincoln Street. So it has very real and tangible results, you know, having a good credit rating, a good credit worthiness. And again, you'll, in your personal lives, you, same thing, if you're going to go and finance a car and you've got a good rating versus a poor credit rating, it makes a very real difference. And we also know that if something bad happens, we have a place to go. It's not a long-term solution just to draw down your savings account, but in a true emergency, you should have an emergency fund to go to while you figure out a permanent long-term solution to whatever's impacting you. So thank you for that.
Thank you, John. Julian, did you have any more?
Oh, thank you.
Okay. Leslie? Leslie, you didn't have one. Tim, you have one.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Jason and Amy, you guys did a great job, this is awesome. I also wanted to thank all the department heads that have control over their own budget. I know from my experience in the private sector, how incredibly important it is to have sound financial figures. It goes a long way to help with decision-making on a day-to-day basis. I know we have a lot of work to do with various schools, police departments, fire department, everybody else. When everybody comes to the table with solid numbers, it just makes, just one step removed in the decision-making process. And also, from a town meeting standpoint, when we all get together and vote on things, when we're all coming from a place where we have faith in the numbers that are presented to us, again, it just makes decision-making that much easier. And then also the financial trend monitoring, you put good information in, we're going to get good information out. So then when we look at the future, we have much more confidence in projecting forward verse you put lousy numbers in, you're going to have no faith in the numbers that come out. So in addition to all the benefits of low credit ratings and interest, it also has an enormous impact on the management of the town and the day-to-day operation. So again, thank you to everybody that had their hand in this. Thank you.
Thanks, Tim. I'll just add my thanks to everybody, to John, to Jason and Amy, all the people, department heads and everything who make the contribution to get us through every budget year and keep us on, as we said, a sound financial footing. I, in past years, served on the financial In past years, served on the Financial Planning Committee before coming to the Board of Selectmen. And over that period of time, I was able to observe in real-time the changes that were affected in terms of the revisions to the town's financial policies, the implementation of the free cash policy, which was very instrumental in revamping how we pay for our capital projects. It's all been, you know, proven out over these years with these consistently sound financial reports and consistently clean audits and everything. So, appreciative of all the work that's gone into it. I've, as I said, had the benefit of actually seeing how it happened, and it didn't just happen by itself. It was a lot of hard work by a lot of town staff and financial committees and the Board of Selectmen to get us to this point. So, very much appreciated all the work and everything. Bill, thank you very much for your...
Thank you. Just a thank you.
Don't say...
There's not much more to say, but thank you to everybody.
Thank you.
Now past the hour of 7:10. John Cudair, Town Administrator. Presentation of the town's 10th consecutive Government Finance Officers Association Distinguished Budget Award for Fiscal Year 2020.
All right. So, you know, we talk about consistency. 10 consecutive years of us following national best practices and, again, having the discipline as an organization through not just staff, but all the boards and committees to deliver, you know, an award-winning budget is something that I think we should all be very, very proud of. The distinction this year, I think 10 years, is quite a milestone. And when we first started this, you know, the speech that I give is every year we'd receive the reward, I mean, the award for distinguished budget, which, by the way, is the only or the highest award in public budgeting that you can get. These are the national best practices that we need to meet to receive this award. A number of communities have achieved it once or twice, and then they've fallen off because every year you have to make improvements if you're going to stay. The way the award process works, and I know you're familiar with this, but just for somebody at home who might be watching, is our budget document goes off and is reviewed by three independent reviewers somewhere across the country. They don't know me, and they don't know the town of Northborough. And they basically tear the budget apart, tell you what you do well, tell you what you can improve upon. And this year in your packet, I don't think I've given this to you before, half the people in the state of Massachusetts have a copy of that, and I don't know that you have ever seen it, but essentially, it's our criteria-like location guide. So, when we apply for the award, there's 27 criteria that we're being judged on. There's 14 mandatory criteria, and if you miss any one of the mandatory criteria, you don't get the award. And then from the 14 to the 27, every year you need to meet one of these other criteria and improve upon the document that you've put together. And so, I gave you the location. So, you can see all the criteria, 27, it's very extensive, and it tells you where you can find each piece of information in our budget document. And so, I use that when I do trainings for other people that are interested in participating in this program so they can find examples of what it is that they need to do in order to meet these best practices. Now, interesting story. We started this 10 years ago. There were about six other communities out of 351 in Mass. that had achieved this award. And of those, I mean, we're talking about the city of Boston, Brookline, Concord. You know, these are communities that are significantly larger than us or have vastly more resources. They have whole budget departments and staff. Our budget is done by the financial team and the department heads. So, we don't have a budget staff, a separate... We've got our day jobs, and then we put this document together. And it is a far more extensive document than the minimum required by law or by charter. So, again, we're following national best practices. If you look, I gave you a list of the communities that have received the award. It's up to, I believe, 27 or 28 in Massachusetts. And it's about 15 or 16 of them that have received the award within the last 18 years or so. And I'm not going to name names, but almost all of those on that list have been trained or introduced to the GFY Distinguished Budget Award by the town of Northborough staff through training sessions that we do for the Mass. Municipal Association, the Managers' Association, the Accountants and the Treasurers Association. We also do work with Suffolk University. So, Suffolk University has an MPA program where they teach people best practices of budgeting and financial trend monitoring. They use the town of Northborough's documents in their class to teach the right way to do things. So, we have really been the organization that has pushed these best practices out there in various venues across the state because we believe it's the right thing to do. And I think the proof is in the pudding. If you look at Northborough, how we operated, how to Tim Kalin's comment about the ability to make informed decisions and have informed debates about public policy, you can't do that without good information and process. And this award is all about information and process so that you can make these informed decisions. And we've had 10 consecutive years of going to town meeting with unanimous support of every member of every board and committee on all of our budget decisions and all of our capital projects, including large capital projects like the Lincoln Street School Building Project. I truly believe that that wouldn't be possible, it wouldn't happen, without this information and this process that we've come to. To some degree, I don't want to say take for granted, but it happens every year. We get the award every year, town meeting goes well every year, your audits are clean every year, the town boards and committees aren't fighting and arguing over resources or the accuracy of projections and things of that nature. Again, back to Tim's point, that's how we're able to make these great decisions, and things appear to go so smoothly. And I know sometimes I've heard comments from people like, "Well, you know, town meeting used to be more exciting when people would fight and the boards and committees didn't get along." As a manager, that is the last thing that I want to see. And as a board or committee, particularly the highest board and committee in town, I assume that's the last thing that you will want to see as well. So, the award is wonderful. The beautiful document is not just attractive, but helpful. But the real value in this is budgets aren't a means... They aren't an end in of themselves. They're a means to an end. And for me, it makes tough budget decisions or policy decisions, they're made not from an emotional standpoint, but with good information. People have the time to look at problems and issues, make informed decisions. That's the value in this. And the reason why we now have four times the number of communities that have pursued the GFY Budget Award is because I introduce it in these work sessions as a means to build consensus. It's a team builder. It's a consensus builder. If you're fighting about the information or the process, you're never going to get agreement, or it's very difficult to get agreement on the outcome. And with this, you're assured that the information is good and that the process is good, and then you're just voting your values as a community. And a lot of public organizations, you know, don't get to that point, and they're not sure how to get to that point. And that's why I think the award has gotten so much traction in the Commonwealth now, and there's so much interest in pursuing these best practices. And I'm able to point to the real tangible results that we found in Northborough, where we've had so many consecutive town meetings where... And they're not easy decisions, but we've been able to build consensus and move forward with a unified front with all these different boards and committees. You know, that doesn't happen by accident. And so, this year, it's our 10th consecutive year. It's a solid decade, and I just think it's worth noting. So, I appreciate you listening to that speech.
Thank you very much, John. Comments from the board? Leslie?
Well, first of all, I think that you and I know Diwackle has a lot of... There's a lot of work that goes into this in the financial team, and I think you all deserve a hand with this being the 10th one. Congratulations, and I think it says a lot. In fact, I equate this to someone becoming an Eagle Scout, where you can know literally nothing about the person or what they have done, but the fact that they've reached that level is extremely telling. And I think this is the same kind of thing, that residents should be very confident in the fact that we've met all these standards, and you've been able to achieve this every year with all the best practices. And the fact that many of the towns who are now getting this are getting it because they're either listening to you or they're borrowing or using the information, maybe word-for-word in their documents, which is fine. And as you said, it's a sincere form of flattery. But it's really an extremely telling award, and I think we're going to run out of buttons on that plaque pretty soon, so. We'll run out of space for those. Yeah.
Well, they used to send individual awards. But if they think you're a repeat customer, they send you the granite one with the little medallions that add on to it, so.
What happened to 2017?
It's behind the bookcase over there. We'll get it at some point. But we did earn it that year, I can assure you.
Thank you.
Julian?
Yes, so I, you know, ditto everything that Leslie said, but also, this comes with a lot of hard work and extra hours. And I've seen many of you here on Sunday afternoons and late Friday afternoons, and I want to thank you for that effort.
Any other comments? I will add my comment, which is, again, having seen all this play out over a decade and seen the discipline and the hard work that goes into it, it's always great to receive an award, but in this case, the end goal is not to receive the award. The end goal is to put into practice the policies and the information acquisition and the decision-making process that feeds out of this. The award is the reinforcement that you're on the right path, keep doing what you're doing, and keep trying to improve it and make it better. So, appreciate everything that's gone into it thus far, and I look forward to another decade of successful financial policies and budget practices.
Would like to get a picture with the board for the annual report, if you would indulge us. That would be much appreciated, and I'd be a financial team come up as well. Come around, we'll put you in the middle, Jason.
Where would you like this?
We can do it right up here. Put you in the middle. Hold back.
I kind of want to...
You guys come. You two want to come down on... Actually, you two go here. You guys can stay there.
We'll do this.
How's that? Relatively balanced. Will we all fit in a picture, Melanie?
Stefan on the other side.
Test out my new phone.
Will we all fit in? Maybe you got to kind of turn sideways.
He could get a little closer, only because there's spaces between you. And I'm sure you all like each other. Very nice.
Thank you.
You got it, Tim? Thank you very much.
Very good.
All right. Now we got our annual report photo.
Now past the hour of 7:15, we have Dave Parenti, Fire Chief, review of ambulance billing fees.
So, through the chair, if I may, while the chief is taking his... So, as the chief's getting settled in, just want to let you know, so we've had some discussions in the past about updating our ambulance fees. At one point in time, it looked like the legislature was going to pass a bill that would have instituted a statewide review committee. And so, we were starting to... We were waiting for that because they were going to put a freeze on potentially any increases in our fee structures. And that never wound up coming to fruition through the legislature. So, we did go back, and the chief has put together an excellent package for you. As we do with most decisions of this nature, the point of this evening is to make the presentation, provide you with the information, give you a chance to answer, ask any questions you may have. And then our intent would be hopefully to bring it back at your next meeting for a vote of the board. So, there's no decision that we're anticipating or requesting of the board this evening. It's just a presentation with information. And then if there's any additional information you'd like before your next meeting, you let us know tonight, and we'll be happy to put that together for you.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, John. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As the Town Administrator stated, I came before you a while ago to discuss my concerns and my belief that we needed to do something with our ambulance fees. And numerous reasons for that. One of the big things is we haven't touched them since 2009, and our costs have yearly gone up since 2009 between personnel and supplies and training and equipment and apparatus. The cost just continues to rise. So, therefore, we need some additional funds, I would believe, some additional funds to help offset this increasing cost. The document you have in front of you is similar to one I gave you before, and I'm not going to go through the whole thing. There are certain areas I'd like to focus on. And one of the things is, after the last meeting, we were asked to go out and do a cost assessment. What does it actually cost us to provide EMS per call to the town? So, if you look, you'll see one of the... In your packet, there's a spreadsheet, and it says category detail budget and notes across the top of it. See that one? That's the first document I'd like to go over. So, you also should have a copy of the comprehensive framework. I believe you have that. If you're looking for some real good scholarly reading, we tell you, good stuff. So, one of the things that we would like to do, and it's funny, you just had this presentation, and you just had two presentations about fiscal management. We like to do good fiscal management. John has instilled that in all the department heads, and I think it's an excellent practice to have. So, when we started looking at what can we do for a cost assessment, we wanted to have something to base it on, something strong to base it on. So, we found a peer-reviewed journal that was supported by the International Association of Fire Chiefs that's being used across 1,000 communities, and they said, "Hey, this is how you should figure it out." So, what we did is we took that, and then we applied our current budget, our current cost to it. So, roughly in the town, we're doing about 68% EMS calls. So, when you look at total cost of providing that EMS call, you don't look at just the ambulance, you don't look at just the personnel. You have to look at 68% of your total cost. What's our building costing? What's our fuel and our heat cost? What does it cost for our overtime? What's the cost for our personnel, our administration? So, we took all of those numbers, some of which we took at a level of 68%, some of which we took at a level of 100%, depending if it was strictly ambulance-driven, such as all of our EMS supplies. The numbers you see in front of you are from the 2019 budget. The estimated cost for operating for EMS is $1,422,594. It's a lot of money, okay? It's about $1,075 per call. Our income per call is about $5.69. And there's numerous reasons for that. There's some people that don't have insurance, understand that. Some people that... We're finding this becoming more and more of a trend, who are taking very high deductibles on their insurance, and the first ones who don't get paid are the ambulance service. So, we're having that issue. We're finding insurance companies that are... They'll pay what they call ordinary and customary, or they're allowable. We contact the patient and say, "Okay, you owe us this much more." The patient calls the insurance company, and the insurance company says, "Okay, we'll pay the rest." But if we don't make that phone call to the patient, and they don't make the phone call consecutively to their insurance, they don't pay us. So, we're seeing all these different things that are adding up to... Our collection rate is pretty good, but as Jason and I were speaking the other day, there's... And by the way, thank you very much to Jason and for John both with putting together this presentation, giving my numbers any... We're seeing some trends that are making us nervous and things where I think we're going to... We could end up... Now, one of the concerns with this is, okay, well, people in the town are already paying taxes for an ambulance service, right? I mean, we understand that, and that's always a concern. And John and I discussed this and thought... And Jason, and thought a good policy to come up with would be a billing policy, and that's also part of your package, that would not balance bill Northborough residents. So, by balance billing, I mean, if we charge your insurance company... If we charge you $2,000 for a medical call, your insurance company pays us $1,500. Currently, we balance bill you that $500. And some people pay it, some people ignore it, some people... Well, it amazes me, the ones who can't afford it are the ones that pay $5 a month, and the ones who can afford it are the ones who ignore us and don't bother even contacting us back. So, right now, we're balance billing those people. So, this policy we have, and again, I'd really like you to take a look at it... I'd really like you to take a look at it, because it's something that next time around, we're going to have to discuss, and I hope you guys have some understanding of, of, excuse me, of, of what it's about. And, and basically, it says, we're not going to balance bill any residents unless two things happen, one of two things happen. Number one, the insurance company directly pays the patient. And that does happen. Some insurance companies, in an effort to get the town to, to sign into a contract with them, will send a check directly to the patient. The patient will then go, ooh, I got a check for $1,500. Cool. And use it for whatever they want, not forward it to us. In those cases, we would balance bill that person, because they got paid from the insurance. We would bill them for the amount of, of, of what's going on. The other thing is, if a patient or someone chose to take a very high deductible, and they're paying a lower rate because of the high deductible, which we understand that, and they may need to, but now we're out, the, the, what it cost us to tran, not even what it cost us, but a portion of what it cost us to transport. So those were the two exclusions to not balance billing people who live in the town. If you live outside the town, we're going to balance bill you. The other thing that this report recommends is beginning to use a collection agency for those who live outside of town. In my previous positions, I've used collection agencies a lot. Some of them, you may not get a lot, but you get something out of it. I know other, other departments as close as, next door to us, use collection agencies for their, for their ambulance billing. So this is kind of, we're gonna, we're, a, a good way to go, that we're not going to balance, we're going to increase our rates, or if, if you decide to increase your rates. We're not going to balance bill the people in Northborough unless one of these two things happen. But we are going to balance bill the people that live outside of Northborough, and we're going to use a collection agency to go after them. Because right now, all we do is report them to the credit bureau, if we have their social security number. That's our, that's the only thing we do. So the, the only other document that I think, I'd like you to take a look at, that I know you'd like, I'd like you to take a look at, is our policy for write-offs. So several, several years ago, by the way, yesterday was my four-year anniversary.
Oh.
A few days ago.
Already four?
Already, yes. Doesn't seem like forever.
[laughing]
So when, uh, we developed a, a policy that will guide me when I do write-offs, as opposed to, oh, I know this person, I'll write their balance off. Oh, I don't, I don't like this person, or, hey. We wanted a guide. So we created this policy that gives us that guidance, that if they meet, and we use state numbers, we use the, the state SNAP numbers, and that, that is actually in there, that's. So we can say, if you are a family of four, and this is your annual gross income, we're okay, we can write that off. So that gives us a guide, as opposed to me just using my, you know, if I like this person or I don't like this person. So all of this together makes up the recommendation for the whole package, not just increase in our fees, but a whole package. And of course, the last thing you need to look at is our recommended increases. So, uh, which is on, it says at the top, ambulance billing rate survey, because I titled it incorrectly, and I apologize for that, and Jason, I didn't catch it. But you'll see, it says skill code Medicare community and Medicare 250. Okay, so it's a little spreadsheet. Medicare allowances went up in the state, depending on where you live, either 1.7% or a little bit less. Our current billing rate is incredibly low. In fact, our current billing rate, as an example, for BLS, which is basic life support emergency, is $594. Medicare allowance is $399.43. And our, our provider, our, our billing provider recommends we bill $1,477. Okay? So we're billing $594. He says, our average top 50, I'm certainly recommend, their average top 50 that they deal with bill at the rate of $1,477. Okay? So what we did is, we went through and took Medicare, did it by 250%, which is a standard. I've called around to talk to some other chiefs, they're either doing that or they're doing higher. And that would make our new rates at BLS emergency at $1398, ALS emergency at $1660, and EMS, ALS 2 emergency at $2402. The other thing this package does, and this is critical, right now, we do not balance bill. And I think I spoke to you all about this last time. We have all these à la carte functions. Several years ago, quite a few years ago, Medicare said, we don't want you to do à la carte functions, we want you to bill this for BLS, this, that's how they do it. This for ALS 1, this for ALS 2. The à la carte functions make it possible to have errors, either in record-keeping or in billing. And I don't want that to happen. I don't want to say, uh, we falsified our bill because we thought we started an IV, but we didn't. Or we did start an IV, and we forgot to record it, so we didn't get paid for it. So we took all of those lower numbers, moved them up, did the Medicare plus 250, and that's where we came up with these new numbers. I think it's a fair policy. I think it's, it's, it's below what some and others in the area have, and it's above what some others in the area have. So it's kind of middle of the road. I think it's a pretty, pretty good policy. I think the billing policy, if you chose to adopt it, would address the concern with the residents. And I think going after the, using a collection agency for those outside Northborough, those who come down 290, we do a lot of those, people that are transient residents, that don't really live here, they're staying in a hotel or something, they have a lot of those. So those people, we'll actually use a collection agency to go after. So, that's my presentation. I, if you have any questions, and as John said, this is just for you to be able to look at, and then we're going to come back, John, I assume, in a month or so, and, and talk to you guys about what you want to do. So I'm here for questions.
That's good. Thank you, Chief.
If I can just make a, a couple of comments. You know, one is, in, in Massachusetts, everybody is legally required to have insurance. So everybody should have insurance. Now, some insurance isn't as good as, as others. But one of the things to keep in the back of your mind is that by design, when you hear what the Medicaid and Medicare pays, by design, there's nobody that can provide ambulance services for
Absolutely not.
what Medicare and Medicaid will reimburse the town for. So right out of the gate, right out of the gate, we are subsidizing the federal program of, programs of Medicare and Medicaid. By having too low of fee structure, we're also, to some degree, subsidizing private insurance companies. Now, we say we're subsidizing these programs, it's the taxpayers of Northborough who are subsidizing them. So in the instance of ambulance fees, you want full cost or near-full cost recovery. Now, that isn't going to really be possible, in part, because the whole way this service is structured nationwide is, everybody's subsidizing the federal government's programs. So one of the things you look at is, well, what does a private ambulance company do? Private ambulance companies are charging double what we're proposing to charge. And their take on it is, they're going to make everybody else make up the shortfall for what the federal government isn't paying for. So this is a very complicated fee structure and fee analysis, because you have players in here. Now normally, you, you charge a fee, and that's what gets paid. In some instances, you have insurance companies saying, well, you know, your fee might be, you know, $1,300, but we're going to give you $800. And so it gets complicated. And the fairest thing that we could come up with was, we need, the costs of providing these services are going up considerably. We're buying ambulances, we're providing a, a paramedic, advanced life support service. It's the highest level of service you can get from, from an ambulance. And so our residents are getting excellent service. And, and the best that we can come up with here is, we know we're going to wind up subsidizing the federal government, because that's the overall umbrella that we're operating under. But we shouldn't be subsidizing private insurance companies. And, but we also want to be, be sensitive to the town of Northborough residents who are also paying taxes. And so this, I think, is a good blend of, we're not the highest, it gets us up around the average of the area for ambulance fees, but it also has a, a safety valve. So, you know, you, you hear the stories, and Dawn and I have had many conversations about this, when we come to ambulance fees over the years, is, you know, the little old lady on a fixed income who can't afford to pay this balance billing is the person who will pay it.
That's very true.
And we want to have the ability to say, look, if you're a Northborough resident, and this is what your insurance company will pay, then that's what we'll accept. But if you're driving through Northborough, you live in another town, or you get into an accident on I-290, we want to have the ability to pursue, in the interests of the town of Northborough, as close to full cost recovery as we can. And so I think this approach strikes a good balance between all those things. And as you'll see, some of our neighboring communities charge even more. And the idea is, they kind of moved a little bit more towards the, the private ambulance model, which is just charge, you know, charge what would make you whole, and then you try to get it out of whatever party you can. You're not going to get it out of the federal government, I can tell you that right now. You'll get some out of, some of it out of the private insurance carriers. And then, you know, we don't want to be chasing our, our residents who have insurance, you know, for a balance billing, other than the, the two exceptions that the chief mentioned. So I think this is a good balance. And to not increase these fees at an appropriate level, ultimately, what we're going to do is, we're going to be subsidizing non-residents, and we're going to be subsidizing private insurance companies. And I don't think that that's ever been the intent of trying to keep our fees reasonable. So.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Chief. Comments? Tim?
Um, just so I can wrap my head around this.
Please.
Expense per response, $1,075. Income per response, $570. So there's a change or a difference of about $500.
About.
That $500, for all intents and purposes, is funded by Northborough taxpayers.
Correct.
So what we're doing is, we're increasing the fee to reduce that burden. We're going to take the burden off of the taxpayer, shift that to, hopefully more to insurance companies that could recover more from insurance companies, and then also shift a, a portion of that burden to people from out of town that use the service. But also, at the same time, because of the increase in fee, reduce the burden on people that can't pay based on the SNAP requirements for household income.
Right.
So it sounds like by doing this, we shift the burden from the Northborough taxpayer to people that use the service and to the insurance companies. Or the people that use the service outside of town, in the insurance companies.
It's important, you know, so, you know, Tim, you threw out the number, what, 5,000? The difference of 5.69, you know, it's, the difference is 669,516.
But 500 per, per.
And if we implement this, at best, I see us getting about an extra $240,000. So we're not even making up half of what.
Yeah, but still, that's, that's.
But it's still going to help.
That's a quarter of a million dollars that comes out of.
It certainly is.
That's not a burden on the taxpayer, the Northborough taxpayer, to cover. That 250 is going to come, that quarter of a million dollars is going to come from other means outside of.
Insurance or outside.
Northborough taxpayer.
That is correct.
Okay.
Uh, Julian?
So if a Northborough resident needed an ambulance and they were in another town, say Worcester, how are they billed?
Well, if they're in Worcester, they're getting, they're getting billed by Worcester EMS. Whoever does the transport, which would be Worcester EMS, and, and their fees are higher than ours. If we go, let me give you a good example. If we go mutually to the city of Marlborough, we pick up a patient over there, they get billed at, by our rates, not Marlborough's rates, by our rates. Okay? If we go, if Westborough comes here, that patient would be billed at Westborough's rates, not our rates, because they're doing the transport, we're not doing the transport. So we can only control the ones that we transport and do the billing. And that's, that Medicare/Medicaid is very strict with, you know, who you can bill, how you can bill, and all that. So if someone was injured somewhere else, whoever transported them, that's who's sending them the bill.
And then they would, our Northborough resident would have to, would be charged for the balance?
Their insurance, I, it would all depend on what that community's policies are.
Oh.
And it would depend on their insurance, it would, it would, there's a lot of different factors, as, as the town administrator said, that weigh into that. They may have a different bound, they may have fees that are twice as high, or they may have fees that are lower, although I seriously doubt they'll be lower unless they're in this very small community.
Is there some reason why this is not standardized somehow?
You mean the fees themselves?
Well, yeah, so that.
So as, as the town administrator had, had alluded to, there's, there's been more than one piece of legislation that has come through and tried to say, okay, this is what we're going to use for fees. The, the, the problem is, fire, most companies, whether it's fire-based EMS or private, cannot, as John said, survive on what Medicare/Medicaid's going to pay. If I'm a private for-profit company, I'm going to charge what the market will allow me to charge. If I'm a fire-based EMS company, I'm going to try and recover some of the money that it costs us to do it, but I'm certainly not going to do it at the expense of our taxpayers or others. So there is no standard right now. Could there be a standard? Could the state come down and say, this is what we're going to do? They could, I don't think they will. There's talk of new legislation coming down sometime next year. I, I don't know what it's going to look like, but our, through the Fire Chiefs Association of Massachusetts, they're always keeping an eye on that, and told us that's always in the queue, but it's been in the queue for 15 years, and, and it, it doesn't get enough support to go through.
Okay, thanks.
Standards would be nice, it would make it much easier.
Leslie?
Uh, thank you, Chief. Can you explain again the two situations when we do not balance bill residents?
Yep. So what, what can happen is, sometimes a insurance company will send the check for the, for the bill that they receive directly to the patient. Now, with that, it says, you are responsible for paying Northborough Fire Department, Westborough, whoever it happens to be, this money. That way, the insurance company can't say, we didn't tell them not to pay, but they just send it to them. Those people, and, and we can, we can tell that happens because our billing agent, they'll say, ABC Insurance, and I don't want to throw anybody out there, okay? So ABC Insurance says they sent the check to the, to the patient, and the patient did whatever they did with it. We would reach out to the patient, the patient would say, yeah, oh, oh, I didn't know I was supposed to send that to you. Or, oh, I had to use it for my whatever. Okay, then you can file a hardship request if you want, if that's the issue. But, so that, that's one scenario. The other scenario would be if a, it's becoming more and more popular, and we're seeing, we're seeing anecdotally that people are taking very high deductibles on their health insurance. Okay? They're taking $1,000, $1,500, $2,000 deductible on their health insurance. And what happens is, when we go to send them the bill, and our bill hits them, because our bill's going to hit them before the hospital bill hits them normally, what bill do you think goes towards the deductible? Ours. And then we never get any compensation for that. It doesn't, even once they hit, when they finally get their bill, the money goes to the hospital or goes to whoever. The only other case that it could fall into play, and I, and that is just addressed in a different place, is if somebody gets in a, a motor vehicle accident and gets a settlement. That's the same type of thing where the insurance company would send that to them. So I get a motor vehicle accident, I get a million dollar settlement, and I don't pay my $1,000 ambulance bill. I came to the board quite a while ago, and we, you approved doing liens, if you recall, Jason and Dawn were here, and Leslie, you were here as well, obviously. So we do a lien on those types of things, and when they do get the settlement, then we get paid. So that normally doesn't fall in, in, into one of these two categories.
As a follow-up, okay, the second situation I can understand. The first situation, where someone is receiving the check directly from the insurer, do we know on average per year how much money we lose because that person isn't reimbursing or using that check to pay us?
I don't have those numbers in front of me, but I could, I could find out those numbers. And, and it's, it's not, it's not as much as the deductibles, I don't believe, because most people, at least the ones, most of the Northborough residents send those checks directly into us, or directly into our billing agent. That's not where we're having the issues normally.
Okay. I didn't know how big a problem that was, because.
It's not terrible, but it, it is, it's just one of those things, and we wanted to make sure we, we, we caught it.
Yes.
And I actually pulled this from a couple of different documents that out, that, that are out there in the state that have been vetted and are currently in place. So I went out and I looked, what's this community doing? What's this community doing? Westford was a big one, because they had a really nice document. So I pulled quite a bit of stuff from them. And, and that's their balance billing. And I spoke, actually, I had, I had our admin who does. I had our admin who does all the, uh, who does a lot of the billing, speak to the, uh, town administrator in, in, uh, uh, Westford, and ask them how it works for them, and it works very well for them.
I, I would be curious how much that is, actually.
Yeah, let me, let me, let me talk to Lorraine, and we'll see if we can get those.
Because that's not fair. That, that's, that's not their money.
You would be amazed at what's, and, 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 and as I said, nothing frustrates me more than to see this person who can't afford it, who's paying five dollars a, a month, and other people who I know either got the check, or I know are living in very nice houses.
That's an issue.
Don?
Yeah, I'm glad we're looking at this, um, it's long overdue. And I, to me, it looks like a good proposal. I would hope at our next meeting, we would be voting on this, John.
Yeah, that would be our intention, unless the board, you know, felt like it wanted more information, you know? But if you're comfortable with what we have, um, then, uh, yeah, give it a little bit of time to think about it, and I, I would hope we can bring it back to you at your next meeting. We do need to do something, uh, clearly, uh, with these fees. And, and I think that we need to be, we need to be more aggressive in pursuing uh, some of these folks that aren't paying, who have the capacity and the insurance to pay. Uh, but we don't wanna do that, that, at the expense of the Northborough residents who can't pay, or don't have the capacity. And I think this is a nice job of separating those two groups and applying the appropriate, um, pursuit to the appropriate.
And, and John makes a great point, there's, there's, everyone has to have insurance, but some of those state insurances do not cover EMS. And if that's the case, if someone has state insurance, and it, and they're a town resident, and it doesn't cover EMS, well, there's a reason they have that level of insurance. We understand that. You know, so that's when you say, okay, not a problem. But it's when people have this insurance, or, you know, or, or they're, they're choosing to take very, very high deductibles just to reduce their cost, they're passing that burden on to those who aren't taking those high deductibles. Or who are paying, and, and it's just not fair.
So in, in effect, this is moving us to a best practice in.
Yeah, which is, and again, if you're looking for some real ribbon reading.
And, and again, we're, it's a, there are more pieces, and what I, what I would hope that we'll do is, you know, um, you know, we'll revisit this again in a year, see how it's working for us, and, uh, and see if we don't need to amend it. But there are more, uh, indirect costs that, that could be, uh, you know, used in this calculation. I was less concerned about capturing all the costs, because, frankly, the whole system is, is, is faulted. In that, I've done a lot of fee studies, and I presented a lot of fee studies over the years to this body. I've never seen a more bastardized, uh, process than ambulance billing with all the caveats and the programs. It, it doesn't lend itself to a, a typical straight analysis. And, and we wanted to make the case for getting our fees up to at least the average of the area, and be able to protect our residents that need protection. Uh, there are more direct costs that could be factored in, for one, benefits of the employees.
I didn't, I didn't figure that in.
Aren't, we didn't put that in, because, uh, we could, but then we'd just be recommending, you know, really high fees that, you know, I don't know if it makes, if it makes sense at this point. So right now, we wanna get our cost recovery up a little bit higher, um, so that we can continue to maintain and provide the high level of service that we provide, and, uh, and push the, some of the burden back onto the insurance companies who are being compensated by the residents to pay for these types of services in the event of emergency. So, all in all, I think it's a very well-balanced approach. I hope you feel the same. And as always, you know, well, there's something that needs to be revisited. But we were holding off, uh, because there was, it looked like this legislation regarding fees at the, at the state level was pending. It was, it had legs, and they actually put a moratorium. It wasn't our choice not to come to you, uh, to, with amended fees. There was a, it was, there was gonna be a moratorium that.
Impose.
Impose, so we just held off to wait to see how the rules shook out, and then ultimately, it didn't pass at the, at the state level.
They're talking about it, you know, we, we restricted you two A-one percent a year, or two percent a year increase, regardless of what your cost increases are. Or, or, you know, there's other stuff out there. One of the ones is, uh, the insurance companies will have to pay whatever we bill them, but we can't balance bill. And so there, there's always something out there, so.
So again, this strikes a good balance. It gets our cost recovery up a little bit to an average fee for the area, but it protects the, you know, the vulnerable residents in Northborough who, or elsewhere, who, who genuinely can't afford the service.
Very good. Thank you very much, Chief. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Chief. And if after you look at this, you have any other questions, feel free to email them to us, and we'll be sure we have an answer for your next meeting.
Great. Thank you, John.
Uh, brings us to reports. Julianne?
So, uh, okay, so, um, I attended the January fourteenth open, open meeting law training session that was held at the library. It was very informative, very well-attended, and I'd like to thank Andy Dowd for organizing this. Uh, secondly, I went to the Mass Municipal Association Annual Meeting on Friday and Saturday, just recently. And so, um, this is the state organization that is made up of elected local officials and employees representing the towns and cities of Massachusetts. So, um, you know, there were a lot of large sessions and workshops, and just a couple of the interesting things that, that I picked up. I went to the Economic Development Workshop, and they were talking about the importance of marketing your town, and setting goals, and working with local businesses, talking to them about what's working for them and what they need. And, and interestingly, as I spoke to other elected officials, and, um, many towns are addressing downtown revitalization and economic development, just as we will be in our master plan. And there are resources out there to help us, but obviously, it's gonna take community participation, as always. The third thing is, the Historic District Commission is looking to gather information about the history of the Northgate neighborhood. So I'm asking if anyone has information, or could put us in touch with someone who might have information, to please email me, and you can do that on the Selectments page on the website. And my last thing is that I ran into Michelle Gillespie, and she mentioned that Applefest is moving the dates of Applefest weekend to September twenty-fourth through September twenty-seventh. The reason it is moved to a later weekend is because of the Jewish holidays. So I hope everyone marks their new calendars for Applefest weekend. And I guess my last thing would be, at the last meeting, we talked about having some sort of notice on the tax bill, on the envelope that reminds people that Town Meeting is April twenty-seventh, and there's a change of time. I think we were gonna get a, maybe an estimate on that? Did, were you able to?
Yes, we were. So it's a, it's about five hundred dollars to, to do that.
So that's it for me.
Okay. Thank you, Julianne. Leslie?
Okay, I attended the Open Meeting Law Training in the library, and I wanna thank John and, and Andy for putting that together. The attorney was very good. I thought her presentation was excellent. You can tell she has done this many, many times before. She was talking really, really fast, and I think she could've talked for another hour, to be honest. I think there, there was so much information, she knew she had to plow through, and it was already nine o'clock, we'd been there for over two hours. So, um, it was very, very well-done, and I think a lot of good information came out of that, so I wanna thank you for that. I'm gonna be a little bit of a broken record here about the, the Carney Park, uh, the dog park. I know that we've had snow and so forth, so I don't know if that changes too much. But I have continuing concerns, because every now and then on social media, I see people say things like, well, we already have a dog park, it's Carney Park. And that's not the case. So I wanted to know whether or not there's any additional monitoring going on, and what we're finding, if so. Somehow, we need to change the, the impression that Carney Park is a, is an off-leash dog park.
Through the chair, if I may? So we are doing regular enforcement at that location. It is a, a constant, um, uh, problem down there, and unfortunately, that's what social media does. Spreads sometimes misinformation, and it's, um, you know, despite the fact that we put out the correct information, and we're stopping people, and we're, uh, making sure the folks down there know it. You know, it's, uh, it continues to be a problem.
Okay. Are people being fined?
Um, uh, people are, uh, people are being written tickets by the dog officer when applicable, yes.
Okay. Okay.
Yep.
All right, good, I'm glad to hear that. I also wanted to, uh, mention the fact that, uh, well, as we all know, Roger Leland will be very, very much missed. He passed away, uh, I think it was last week. And he was such a vital member of this community. He was ninety years old, and pretty much was active up until the last two or three years, I believe. And, uh, was just a fascinating man, and I, what I find unfortunate is so many of the obituaries about people. You find out so much more about them that you wished you knew, when they were still alive, so you could've chatted with them about things. He just, he just was a, just a wonderful person. And for those of us who have attended Town Meeting for many, many years, we have all seen him speak. We've, we've heard all the things he had to say, and to be honest with you, I was always relieved when he stood up and spoke, because I knew that it, it had gotten to the point where something needed to be said, somebody needed to be reasonable and sensible, and rational, and that's exactly what he was. So I always was so happy when he stood up and spoke, and everyone pretty much, you know, listened to him, and he did his word. So I, he will very much be missed, and I wanna just thank his family for everything they've done, and all the support they gave him, so that he could do what he wanted to do throughout his lifetime. So, that ends my report.
Thank you, Leslie. Tim?
Uh, I was unable to attend the, the Open Meeting Law presentation, but I did watch the, the video that Andy sent out. It was very informative, um, and like, um, Julianne and Leslie, just thank Andy and everybody that had their hands put together, it was, it was extremely helpful. I did wanna thank the Northborough Trails Committee, and other people around town that helped maintain the trails around town. I see stuff on social media and, and hear from people, uh, about bridges being damaged, trees being down, and people go out on their own to take care of those in, in the winter. So I just wanted to say, um, thank you to those people. And also, the Open Space Committee has a survey out, um, and they're just looking for feedback on open space issues in town. You can find that on the, the town website, and various places on social media. Uh, that ends my report.
Thank you, Tim. Don?
Yeah, and I would also like to extend my sympathy to the family of Roger Leland. Roger was vital in the town of Northborough for years and years and years, um, serving on numerous committees, including the Appropriations Committee, the Financial Planning Committee, different study boards, and he'll be missed, and his family. We just wanna extend our grateful that you shared Roger with us, and let him be on so many committees, and be so influential in the town of Northborough. I'd also like to say, my business had, um, the use of the ambulance last night in the Fire Department, the Police Department. And I'd just like to thank the Fire Department, Police Department, for the fact that when they show up, they're just so compassionate, so level-headed, um, so nice to the people. Um, it was a nice, nice experience as far as something bad happened, but it was a nice, nice seeing how they interact with the community, and people that don't normally deal with police and fire. So I'd like to thank both departments, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Don. Let me pull up my notes. I'd like to congratulate the Fire Department on receiving a sixty-three-hundred-dollar grant, which will be used for, um, I believe, senior, uh, seniors' smoke detectors and battery replacements, to ensure that those.
Battery replacement and also education program.
Education program as well, so excellent. Just another example of our Fire Department seeking these kinds of grants to provide assistance to citizens of the town. I'd like to thank, I believe it was Captain Brillhart, who was, uh, responsible, so, thank you. Uh, on January twenty-first, the Planning Board, um, at their meeting, held, uh, well, they presented their proposed revisions to the Master Plan draft. Uh, the Master Plan had been completed and approved by the Master Plan Steering Committee, submitted to the Planning Board. The Planning Board, upon their review, had some additional modifications that they thought they wanted to make. So at that meeting, they, uh, communicated what changes they had in mind. And now, that, um, those changes are open for review, um, for public review, and written submitted comments. I believe the Planning Board will be taking final action at their February eighteenth meeting, and in the interim, the Master Plan Steering Committee plans to meet and review the changes, and provide feedback to the Planning Board. So if you have an interest, I believe there must be someplace where the proposed changes are accessible. If you have any interest in reviewing those and submitting written comments, uh, you can do so. Uh, and then finally, uh, yes, acknowledging Roger Leland, um, just a, a towering presence in, in the town of Northborough. I had the honor and privilege, and, and in this case, it's probably no, the most apt time I ever use these words, honor and privilege of serving with Roger on the Financial Planning Committee for ten years' time. And, uh, during that period, we would meet in this room. Roger, through his experience and wisdom, uh, and knowledge, certainly was deserving to be sitting in this seat as Chair of the Committee. Instead, he would always prefer to sit down on the end, fold himself into a chair, and just be able to turn and see the entire room, and understand what's going on, withhold his comments until the end, after everyone else had their say, and then inevitably present a very reasoned and balanced and sensible, uh, viewpoint, so. One of our, uh, annual, uh, outings each year, in support of the capital planning for the Financial Planning Committee, was to take a tour of the schools. And, uh, um, again, it was just a, a pleasure to be touring the schools with Roger, and, uh, as he referred to her, his lovely bride, Lorraine, so. It's a very sad moment, sad time for all of us, but, uh, we certainly, uh, send our condolences to Lorraine and the Leland family, and, uh, uh, very appreciative of all the, all the work that Roger did on behalf of the town. He will certainly be missed. And that concludes my report. John?
There's not much I can add to what the Board's comments were, um, to Roger. Personally, I will miss him incredibly. We had a very, very close working relationship. But Roger spent thirty-plus years serving on some board or committee to this community. And the fact of the matter is, I think most people who didn't work with him don't know who he is, because he really never sought the limelight. He just wanted to contribute and work hard for the community, and make a, make a contribution. And, um, he was always a voice of reason, and when things got a little heated, you'd hear him calm everybody down, and then my favorite thing about Roger was just refer to everybody as my brother. My brother has made a good point. My other brother has made another point. Let's discuss this. Just had a great, easy way about him, and, um, he'll just be sorely missed.
Thank you, John. Which brings us to public comments. Anybody? Ms. Misselli?
Good evening, my name is Lisa Misselli of Thirteen Maple Street, and I wish to make a public comment tonight. Before I go into that, I would also like my condolences to the family of the Lelands. I know his son, Jeff, pretty well, and, um, it is a sad passing. My most recent tax increase is jarring. It's not the twenty-five cents per thousand on the value, rather the jump of assessment to my property. In my case, seventy thousand dollars this year. Even though my street now sports a double-yellow line, little-to-no replacement shade trees, and has become a speeding commuter route. I'm sure everyone in town is also feeling the sting of this tax increase, and we haven't even seen the next increase for the proposed twenty-two-million-dollar fire station. We hear that we are doing a great job on our budget, but we have seen few new town amenities in years. We have been told no to additional sidewalks to be plowed or even built, no to tree replacements. Yet our taxes keep going up. So where is the money going? I attended the last Whitecliffs Committee meeting to hear the Town Administrator request from the Architects DVBW to put together the estimated cost of building a new town hall behind the Whitecliffs. So I have a few questions to ask the Board. One, please let me know where I might find the minutes of the BOS where the Administrator was requested to expend some of the Whitecliffs CPC money to get projected costs of a building, a brand-new building for a town hall. Two, why is the option to buy back Four West Main Street not being discussed when this nineteen-eighty-two Town Meeting set forth a forty-year buyback option, which will be two thousand and twenty-two, just around the corner? And if we miss that, it'll be another ten years. And finally, three, since the Master Plan surveys all wanted downtown revitalization, and to move back into Four West Main Street for our town offices, why hasn't the Board? and to move back into 4 West Main Street for our town offices, why hasn't the Board started to prepare a town hall committee to prepare the paperwork and such needed to move back into 4 West Main? As a senior, my fixed income will not sustain additional taxes to build yet another new building, jumping ahead of Peaslee School's renovations again, after the fire station project pushed it back already. Where will all this money come from to continue to create new municipal buildings and leave the old ones behind to decay? Thank you.
Thanks. If you have those in written form, could you send them to the Board, please?
I'll send them over. That's all I have is my notes, but I can read...
However you like to do that, sure.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. New business. Update on fiscal year 2019 state aid.
So I was also at the MMA Conference this weekend, and one of the primary things that typically happens at the conference is the governor comes in and usually uses it as a springboard for release of his budget. Ironically, this year, just the way the dates worked out, his budget, his House Two budget release was on Wednesday, and then the conference was on Friday, so when he spoke, he jokingly said, well, you know, now that I'm here, I don't really have anything to tell you, because it's all out there already. But as you know, we spent a lot of time in December talking about state aid, the state of the economy, and where we thought the state aid revenues might go. In our budget model, we assumed a 1% state aid increase in fiscal '21, and in the governor's House Two budget release, it looks like he's got a 1.5% increase in state aid. Now, whenever I talk about state aid, I always caution the Boards and Committees, there's two aspects to, to state, to state aid. There's the receipts, the revenue they give us, and then they charge us back for things like mosquito control and the MBTA, although we don't have a station, we're, a neighboring community has one, so we get charged for those things. It's really the net of the new revenues, and then the increase in assessments, so, and again, this is very preliminary at this point, but with the increase in the assessments, we're looking at a 0.89% increase in state aid. So, yeah, it's a whopping $48,000 on a $5.4 million account. So as I said, in December, you know, at least our financial projections reflect this reality, and it shouldn't come as a surprise to anyone. The other thing is, when it comes to state aid, we generally don't know what our final state aid numbers are until well after Town Meeting. So the House will take up their budget proposals in April, the Senate typically in May. If we're lucky, we'll have our state aid numbers by the start of the fiscal year on July 1st. Many times, we don't have that. So we're basically where we thought we would be. And as the budget progresses, the House tends to be a little more generous than the governor, and then the Senate tends to be a little more generous than the House, usually, because as their processes take place, they have another month or two data and information with regard to revenues, so they're able to make a little bit better budget proposal. Having said that, in December, I told you, the consensus hearing took place, they heard presentations from Department of Revenue, from the mass taxpayers, as well as from various economists, and the consent, and the, they all basically said state aid, or state revenues are likely to go up between 2% and 2.3%. The House, and the governor, and the Senate got together in their consensus hearing, they're assuming a 2.8% increase. So even though the state budget will be predicated on a 2.8% increase, as of right now, we're looking at something probably right around the 1%, which is what we modeled in our fiscal '21 budget. So again, it's news, it shouldn't be surprise, but it's the first of three pieces that will come out over the next several months. I think the important thing to take away from this is that the analysis that we provided was good, and that I don't foresee any material changes coming forward through the state budget process that would prompt us to change our estimates or our assumptions, and thereby change our budget targets for fiscal '21.
Okay. Thank you, John. Any questions? Hearing none. Next item, interview Subcommittee Recommendation for Appointments to the Board of Trustees of Special Benevolent Funds and the Cultural Council.
Mr. Chair, I move the Board vote to appoint Karen Skopetsky to the Board of Trustees of Special Benevolent Funds for a partial two-year term to expire on April 30th, 2021, as recommended by the Interview Subcommittee.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Mr. Chair, I move the Board vote to appoint Marsha Roman to the Board of Trustees of Special Benevolent Funds for a partial three-year term to expire on April 30th, 2022, as recommended by the Interview Subcommittee.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Mr. Chair, I move the Board vote to appoint Terry Underwood to the Cultural Council for a three-year term to expire on January 31st, 2023, as recommended by the Interview Subcommittee.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you very much. Next item, reappointment. Leslie, would you care to help me out with the pronunciation of this name?
Abish Nagan Nagayan?
Abish Nagan Nagayan.
Big.
I'm sorry. I apologize for not being able to pronounce the name, so.
Yep.
Nuen, thank you. Thank you for helping me. Leslie?
Mr. Chair, I move the Board vote to reappoint Dick Nagan-Gaias to the Cultural Council for a three-year term to expire on January 31st, 2023.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Very good. And next up, execution of cemetery deed 1091.
Mr. Chair, I move the Board vote to execute cemetery deed 1091.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor? Any other business to come before the Board?
Or the business this evening.
Do I have motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chair, I move re-adjourn.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor? All right. We are concluded. Thank you very much.